Or pro pay has four components, those components being career ladder advancement options. This includes our teacher leadership positions and responsibilities, job embedded professional development, which frequently utilizes our teacher leaders, and professional learning community structures, which we call collaborative teams, teacher evaluation and performance pay. The continuous improvement cycle is followed throughout the program's implementation of the four components. And I'm here today to present to you the findings of our annual review and share recommendations we have for the 2025-2026 school year. This year, we collected data from administrators, probationary and tenured staff, teacher leaders on implementation, impact on instruction, and impact on student learning. So our teacher leaders play a vital role in supporting probationary staff members and driving our implementation efforts. This year, our building leadership team or BLT members supported site direction and implementation of the school improvement plan. They supported collaborative teams through reviewing and providing feedback on CT goals, as well as ongoing guidance, resource, and support as needed. They supported staff through the mentoring of new teachers, observations of their peers, planning and facilitating professional development, and participating in educational-based decision-making. We had 83 mentors, supporting almost 120 mentees across our district. Probationary staff rely on mentors for resource, emotional, institutional, and instructional support. Eighty-two percent of respondents agreed or strongly agreed that their mentoring relationship enhanced their ability and confidence to carry out their job responsibilities. Seventy-one percent of collaborative teams or CTs indicate that they fully implement working through the Plan Do Study Act cycle in order to identify student needs and instructional strategies. This is a 10% increase from the previous year. CTs identify common learning targets and benchmarks for core instruction, analyze data to assess individual and group student needs, adjust groupings, tailor instruction, and implement research-based strategies and interventions. This collaboration supports differentiated instruction and helps students make progress towards learning targets. The district has eight continuous improvement coaches or CICs, serving around 600 licensed staff members across 18 sites. CICs conduct observations aligned with the Danielson Framework and research-based best practices to support staff in meeting students' needs. Tenured staff have the option to choose a collegial conversation choice in place of one of their traditional observations with their CIC. Ninety-two point nine percent of staff report that this observation choice, if elected, has a moderate to high impact on their practice. Probationary staff are primarily observed and evaluated by their administrators. Around eighty-six percent of both tenured and probationary staff report that the observation process has a moderate to high impact on their instruction or practice. The CIC team continuously seeks additional ways to support professional growth and respond to the diverse needs of our staff. This year, we piloted learning walks with 63 probationary classroom teachers new to the district. Most participated in two half-day sessions facilitated by CICs focused on observing and reflecting on Danielson Domains II and III of the Danielson Framework. During each session, participants visited three to five classrooms to observe veteran teachers in action. Ninety-five percent of staff agreed that the learning walk process supported their professional growth, enhanced their ability to reflect on and improve their practice, and that they would recommend this experience to other probationary staff. Based on feedback from the first round, we made adjustments to enhance the learning walk experience for staff. These changes led to increased average participant ratings in round two. One key improvement was providing participants the opportunity to ask questions about the instructional decisions of the teacher they observed. These conversations between experienced veteran teachers and those new to the profession or the district, creating meaningful moments to honor the expertise of our teachers, support the growth of probationary staff, and foster professional connections for ongoing collaboration. Staff described the experience as beneficial professional development and expressed a strong desire for more classroom visits, extended observation time, and broader access to future learning walks. While it was encouraging to hear that staff found the learning walk beneficial, we also sought to understand whether the experience led to meaningful shifts in their instructional practice. Nearly three-quarters of staff who participated reported making a specific change to their instruction or professional practice. The most common changes involved implementation of relationship-building strategies, classroom management routines, student engagement techniques, refining instructional delivery of our curriculum, or adjusting their own behaviors, such as tone or use of nonverbals. The vast majority of these staff members felt those adjustments had a moderate to high impact on student learning. As CICs facilitated the walks, we collaborated with administrators to align the focus areas with patterns they observed in classrooms. Administrators overwhelmingly saw value in the learning walk process as a support structure for probationary teachers. About half of them also reported seeing or hearing clear evidence that participants were applying what they had learned. To better support our probationary staff, we recommend expanding and refining the learning walk experience. Building on the foundation established during the pilot year, we can now implement the process with greater flexibility and responsiveness. CICs will continue to collaborate with administrators to identify individual and group trends and tailor support accordingly. Based on survey results from this year's Q Comp review, we offer the following additional recommendations for the 25-26 school year. When asked about additional support needs of probationary staff, administrators, mentors, and probationary staff themselves consistently emphasize the importance of more coaching and feedback. With the recent reduction in the number of observations for tenured staff, we recommend CICs increasing observation and feedback opportunities for probationary teachers. In response to last year's recommendation, we updated our evaluative rubrics for specialized roles. We consolidated 12 existing rubrics into two comprehensive tools aligned with the 2022 Danielson Framework and current best practices. These revised rubrics better reflect the professional practices of specialized staff and create a more sustainable and viable system for feedback and evaluation. To support successful implementation, we recommend initial training for all staff on the new rubrics and ongoing calibration opportunities for evaluators and coaches to ensure interator reliability and alignment of feedback. Finally, with momentum from our leadership teams learning at the PLC Institute this summer and in alignment with Minnesota's multi-tiered systems of support, we recommend an increased focus on supporting collaborative teams. Emphasizing data-informed educational decision-making through the Plan Do Study Act cycle will further strengthen CT's effort to improve student outcomes. Thank you for your time this evening.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Board members, questions or comments? Just, I guess, kind of a comment with a question. I've noticed that interator reliability continues to be a theme here. Can you elaborate on maybe why and what we're doing to do things differently and better?
It's one of, also, the requirements is to ongoing interator reliability opportunities as ongoing professional development. Also, as we have administrators move in and out of roles or have new administrators, new coaches. The coach term is about three to five years, so that itself needs more interator reliability opportunities. And just to ensure that our teachers are hearing feedback and that we're giving feedback aligned, that no matter who's giving that teacher feedback, the feedback's very similar.
I know. I really appreciated kind of the picture that you painted on the learning walks. And great to hear that that's something that's expanding because just hearing over time that staff both appreciate it and benefit from it, and by consequence, our students, that was really helpful as well. So thank you for this report. It was very informative and appreciate you presenting that tonight.
Thank you.
We turn next to an update with Amina Aftedal, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, on the READ Act implementation report.
Thank you, Vice Chair Alt, Superintendent Battle, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to update you this evening on the progress of the district's implementation of the state READ Act. READ Act is a statewide initiative that is mandated by the state legislature in 2023 and has gone through a variety of updates each year. Its purpose is to impact reading instruction across the state and align it with the science of reading, and the legislation carries with its specific mandates and is supported with reserved funding. The READ Act has three main components: screening and assessment, curriculum and instruction, and professional development. And I'll give you a brief update in each of those areas. The READ Act has updated the requirements for literacy screening in this last year since the initial adoption in 2023. Since then, the Minnesota Department of Education has been providing guidance and clarification around these requirements. Along with the fall and spring universal screening using the state-required assessments, a winter screening window was also added. As part of this change, there was also a change in scoring that is now required for a subtest entitled nonsense word fluency, and it is part of the requirement for screening all students for indicators of possible dyslexia. MDE has also mandated that in addition to submitting district summary data, which we have done for many years as part of the local literacy plan, that districts are also required to have the student-level test data information sent directly from the testing vendor to the Department of Education. How that data is being used has not been made clear to us. An individual oral reading fluency assessment has also been added to grades two and three, three times a year, fall, winter, and spring. Students who do not meet grade-level benchmarks for this fluency assessment are also required to then be screened with the nonsense word fluency test for indicators of dyslexia. Recent guidance from the Department of Education is requiring a yearly two-step screening process for all students in grades four through 12. School districts may select any standardized assessment for step one for all students, and students who do not meet grade-level benchmarks in reading are required to take an additional screener selected by the Department of Education, known as CAPD Read Basic, in order to screen for indicators of dyslexia. Students in grades four through nine in our district are already screened with the state-approved FastBridge A reading, and that will be expanded to grade 10 for the 25-26 school year for all students. And only those not meeting benchmark will also be required to take the CAPD Read Basic. We are waiting further clarification from MDE on options for screening step one for students in grades 11 and 12 before we move forward. The school district receives designated funds for the implementation of the screening and assessment each year, and the cost to meeting these screening requirements for this school district is estimated to grow from the $68,000 that we spent this year to about $100,000 for next year. The READ Act also seeks to guide school districts to use instructional materials aligned to the science of reading. This includes foundational literacy focused on phonemic awareness, phonics, and fluency. We've shared with this board for many, the last few years, on how we've moved forward with many of those curriculum implementations. And this year, all elementary sites expanded the implementation of foundational literacy to grades three, four, and five. In grades K3, we are using the Hagerty Bridge to Reading, and functional phonics and morphology is what we're using in grades four and five. The cost for curriculum materials, training, and online resources for this year was just under $135,000. The annual renewal cost for next year will be $99,000. In November, MDE will release an approved list of intervention tools and programs that can be used for grades K through 12. Once we have that information, we can begin to examine these tools and see which ones are going to fit the needs of our different levels and programs, and then we can purchase accordingly. As part of the district curriculum review cycle, core literacy materials for grade five will begin review in 2026. There are currently two core curriculums approved by the Department of Education as highly aligned, and the exploration and learning work around these two curriculums will begin next year in anticipation for a full district review the following year. And this will be used in addition to the foundational literacy curriculum already in The READ Act component, third one, is professional development. And this year, we had 370 individuals enrolled in one of the state-required literacy courses. The coursework is extensive and required all available professional development time in the calendar and more. Staff worked very hard to make this a focus, and they were committed to the learning. As of June 6th, 123 teachers completed the required training at the mastery level. 101 teachers are in progress and on track to complete by June 20th. We have some teachers who have already completed in the prior year, and we have some who started mid-year. So we have 94 teachers that are continuing and will be supported to complete the training before the start of the next school year. Depending on new hires, we do anticipate 60 staff to be completing the Phase 1 training next year. In addition, the READ Act training includes a requirement that all educational assistants who may support students in literacy be trained as well. Our district literacy coaches will be trained over the summer and then provide the state-required literacy professional development for approximately 140 educational assistants in pre-K through 12. MDE has delayed the secondary training to 26, 27 for Phase 2. At that time, we anticipate around 65 of our secondary staff participating. The current planning is that staff participating in READ Act training will do so during the contract hours whenever possible. The extensive scope of the training means that staff next year who need to complete Phase 1 will participate in READ Act training rather than other professional development activities occurring at their site or in the district. In addition to meeting these key requirements in assessment, curriculum, and professional development, we are also supporting teachers in classrooms with two literacy coaches across the district. We are exploring pilots with intervention programs. We are collaborating with special education, multilingual programming, and general educational literacy instruction. And the development of site administrators continues in their work to observe, provide feedback, and evaluate high-quality literacy instruction in the daily classroom. That will take us to next year's implementation to the READ Act.
Great. Thank you very much, Amina. I'll open it up for questions? Director Hume?
So, on the slide where you talked about the screening slide and the required dyslexia screening for students in grades four through 12 who are not at grade level?
That's correct.
We've talked at other meetings about how, I'm not going to put out a number because I don't remember the number, but some number of students who are not reading at grade level could be due to them being, say, recent immigrants who aren't speaking a lot of English just yet. So I'm curious how that looks if they're being screened for dyslexia while also being an English-language learner.
I think that's an excellent question, Director.
Thank you.
And it is one that we have posed to the Department of Education as well. Students who are still developing their proficiency for English language would fall under the basic requirements for dyslexia, indicators of dyslexia screening. And we have asked the Department of Education, and we have stated it in our assessment plan, that we will continue to exempt those students from the dyslexia screening until they have reached what our multilingual program has identified as the appropriate level. And so we will continue to honor the needs of our students in developing their English-language proficiency before we identify them for future needs in reading.
Thank you. The other is more of a, probably more of a comment at this point because it wasn't really what you were here to talk about, but I will be curious when we get the inevitable next update on how our reading scores are doing and if we're starting to see, hopefully, the intended impacts of the READ Act. I know you mentioned that it's changed every year since it was passed, and the deadlines have been extended, so I realize, I guess we just don't know yet what the impact will be, but I think we're all hopeful that the impact will be what we want it to be.
And I think that, I know that's not a real question there, but I will respond to that comment, is that people have worked very, very hard at ensuring that we have strong implementation of those foundational literacy skills. And so what we are seeing is, I think, really some definitive growth for our students that, both typical and more aggressive growth for our students who may be coming to us. We know that about 40% to 50% of our students who enter kindergarten don't really have that benchmark skill of preparedness, and so are really working hard with our kindergarten students on that foundational literacy and then using that time in K1 and 2 to hopefully be able to see some of that proficiency in, or more growth and faster growth in those areas.
And we've definitely seen some encouraging signs in some of the other reports we've had this year, so I remain hopeful.
And as we begin to look at our spring data and do that analysis, which we're doing right now, I think when we bring that report, we will be able to really highlight some areas where we have seen real impacts and growth.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes. Director Henderson?
On that same slide, when we're looking at the cost of assessments, can you explain, is that the cost of the FastBridge programming? Is there more cost outside of the actual software?
Right. So last year, we spent about $53,000 on FastBridge assessments. We've been asked to, with these mandates, add some additional pieces to that and then expand it into grade nine. And so that's where the $68,000 figure comes from. Next year, we'll expand into grade 10 for our FastBridge, and then because the CAPD Read Basic is required from the state of Minnesota, we'll also be able, we'll also be required to purchase that as an individual license for each student that is, and we won't know that until we finish our first level of screening. And right now, MDE is working on statewide purchasing agreement, so we would be able to purchase under a statewide agreement. At this time, CAPD Read Basic is kind of an expensive assessment for a school district our size, and so we'll be leaning on the state purchasing agreement for that.
Great. Thanks. Any other questions? Dovetailing on Director Hume's first question on multilingual learners and dyslexia identification and kind of broadening it to understanding dyslexia as this focus, I have to imagine that while the students may be exempt from the screening, where we are supporting them, should they be dyslexic? I mean...
Right. And so, just to clarify, we are not able to diagnose students with dyslexia. We are screening them for characteristics of dyslexia and then using instructional strategies and interventions that are focused on those particular characteristics.
Got it. Thank you.
And students who are multilingual students, as part of our collaboration, we will be piloting two different interventions with literacy interventions with our students in order to kind of provide that additional support to see which one is the most effective for language learners.
Awesome. Thank you. That's helpful. And I guess there's also a question about new hires coming into the district. Some of them may arrive with some of this training already, some may not. Can you elaborate on what that might look like?
Sure. So in collaboration with the Human Resources Department, we have added that as a question on our applications so that folks are able to identify immediately whether or not they have completed one of the required trainings, and they can upload their certificates. So all certificates then, whether they're completed here or people bring them in, become part of the HR personnel file. So that helps us track as well. And because this is a Phase 1 push across the state, we do anticipate some of our new hires, if they're coming to us from another district in the state, will come to us with some of that particular training. For new hires that come to us without that training, there are a couple of pathways. One, if they come to us with, as a straight-out-of-school, with a recent degree, we can submit their transcripts to MDE, and if the MDE reviews it and identifies that their coursework meets those requirements for the science of reading, they can be identified as completed. Otherwise, MDE continues to pay the cost of one license for one of the required training for each licensed teacher. So if a teacher comes to us, has never tried, attempted the training or taken the training anywhere, MDE still will, until 2027, pay for a license for them to obtain the training.
And this may be beyond the scope of the conversation, but you just got me thinking about, you know, our partners in higher education, right? Thinking about newly graduated teachers, are they also being coached in terms of the READ Act? And here are some courses that you may want to take because it'll, you know, it'll kind of fast-track you through this training that we know you're going to need?
Don't know if I can answer that question.
That's fine. Thank you. Appreciate the report, Amina. Always informative.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we will turn to Dr. Battle on a report about fundraising.
Thank you, Chair, for the evening, all-wise chair, and Directors of the Board. Policy 511 student fundraising requires a report to the Board of Education once a year. We ran reports from our Skyward financial system from May 1st, 2024, to May 31st, 2025, as well as included all school-reported fundraisers. Donation reports have also been regularly provided to the Board throughout the year. We have compiled the list that includes the activity, type of fundraisers, timing, purpose, and results. You see a ver, the lengthy report. According to policies, the building administrator shall be responsible for developing recommendations to the superintendent or designee that will deem the activity as acceptable by employees, parents, and students. All fundraising activities must be approved in advance by an administrator. The superintendent or designee shall be responsible for providing coordination of student fundraising throughout the school district as deemed appropriate. We do have a process in place that calls for a completion of a request for fundraiser form. It must be approved and signed by the site or department supervisor and forwarded to the Office of the Assistant Superintendent for review and approval. Once approval is received, the fundraiser may proceed with communications with the public. The administrative assistant to the Assistant Superintendent can establish an e-commerce link for the receipt of credit card contributions to the fundraisers, which are deposited into the appropriate fundraiser account code, and provides a link to the electronic communications with families and our public. We appreciate the Finance Department making the e-commerce available because it allows the ease of electronic contribution and eliminates the handling of cash and checks within our schools. We do encourage the use of electronic means. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Battle. Any questions or comments? All right. Thank you. Next, we turn to a report about the proposed FY26 adopted budget with Tyler Danny, Director of Finance.
Good evening, Chair, Chair, or Chair, oh, sorry. Superintendent Dr. Battle, members of the Board, I'm here to present the proposed budget The timeline of the budget process included approving the FY25 revised budget, discussion on assumptions, parameters, and recommendations, and staff and community feedback. Tonight is the presentation of the budget information, and a recommendation for approval will happen at the next meeting in June. The assumptions used in the FY26 revenue budget include 7,021 K-12 enrollment, 2.74% or $200 per pupil increase to the general... 2.74% or $200 per pupil increase to the general education formula, 2.06 million decrease in compensatory after formula changes, and a $5.5 million general tax levy decrease. A quick legislative update, these items are not included in the budget and have officially passed since creating this presentation. A compensatory hold harmless formula change will increase funding by 1.67 million. We're expecting $375,000 in summer unemployment costs, which will now be fully reimbursed. Special education transportation reimbursement was reduced from 100% of costs to 95% in FY26 and 90% in FY27. Reductions in the per pupil allowance for student support personnel and school library aid result in a reduction in funding of $150,000 and $45,000. The assumptions used in the expenditure budget are 2.5% increase to sales on salary schedules and 5% increase to health insurance premiums, transportation contract, and other areas such as utilities, supplies, and contracted services. This slide includes a link to the current budget adjustments document, which includes a couple of changes. The adjustment to increase the walking distance for secondary students has been removed and added a Somali community engagement specialist and two FTE at the high school. Here's an updated list of the grants supporting our priorities. We were awarded a third Grow Your Own Adult Grant that will begin FY26 for $400,000. The proposed budget for all funds, revenue is approximately 216 million and expenses are approximately 228 million, which is about a $12 million reduction in the total fund balance. So what restrictions are there? Capital is used for approved equipment based on state statute. Title funds are designated for specific purposes, such as needs associated with high poverty rates. The technology levy is specifically for technology personnel and equipment. And then there are the other funds, such as food and nutrition services and community education. QComp or Propay, state statutes changed in 2024 to require a restricted reserved fund balance for the allowable expenses and revenue. So a resolution will be brought to the next meeting to uncommit the Propay balance so we can use the new restricted fund balance process for 2025. General fund revenues total 158.6 million, with the largest source of revenue coming from the state. Next largest is local property taxes. And the chart on the right shows a five-year trend. General fund expenditures total 169.5 million. Seventy-seven percent relates to the salaries and benefits for employees. The same expenditures broken out by program area. Seventy-one percent is related to the instruction of students. General fund staff by bargaining group, 69% of staffing costs are for teachers. The Food and Nutrition Services Fund revenues total 6.8 million. There are very little sales anymore with free meals, so 81% of the revenue is federal money. Food service expenditures total 7.5 million. The largest cost in this fund relates to food, milk, and supplies. Staffing costs are a close second. And the chart on the right shows the last couple of years have had substantial increase in capital costs as we upgrade kitchen equipment and cafeteria tables. Community Service Fund revenues total 7.5 million, with 41% coming from tuition and fees to participate in the programs. Community Service expenditures total 7.9 million, with 77% related to staff salaries and benefits. This slide shows the fund balance history for each fund, including three years of actual history and three years of future forecasts. And this slide takes that same information and presents it in chart form and shows 2425 may be the peak in the total funds. And we start seeing the fund balance get spent down. The General Fund Current Reality shows the expenditures over revenue variance of approximately $11 million brings the total general fund balance to 45.35 million. The unassigned fund balance falls to 30.24 million or 17.84% of expenditures. And other documents are linked here and include the General Fund Expenditures by Budget Unit and the Staffing List by Site and Budget Unit. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Tyler. Dr. Battle?
Thank you, Chair, Alt, members of the Board. Thank you, Tyler, for your presentation. I do want to make a note on the General Fund Current Reality, if you can pull that slide back up. The Board did direct me to not go below 18% for our fund balance. With the changes that I made with removing the walk distance and then adding staffing, I am slightly under. So for your consideration is if I may have just a little bit more of the fund balance. Anything else, Tyler? You missed? Okay.
Great, thank you for that additional highlight. Questions or comments, Board members? Director Hume?
If I get to go first again. First, maybe not the biggest ticket item, but it's one I've talked about a couple of times. So thank you for finding a way to not increase the walking distance for our secondary students. I think that's a very important thing. I've gotten feedback from a handful of community members that were very concerned about that, so I really appreciate that. I think that's a good headline, that we are not changing that after considering it earlier in the cycle. And I think it shows that we listen to the community when they give us that feedback, so thank you. Then the other thing that, you said this very explicitly, but I think it's worth pointing out, is there is a $12 million shortfall basically between our revenue and expenditures this coming year. So yes, we've got a budget that we can deal with. The future, something's going to have to change in the future in order for us to continue to have a healthy fund balance. So storm clouds on the horizon, I suppose. So I guess I have no actual questions, just those two comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Hume. Any questions? Yes, thank you, Tyler. And the book, you know, I always rave about the budget book. It's just, for budget wrongs, it's a great read. And it also provides some great context for our community in terms of the school district and our operations. So I appreciate all the time and effort that goes into that. I guess just one question and a comment. I'll make the comment first. I have to say that I appreciate the consideration that our legislators give to education. At the same time, it's disappointing to see the give and then take as it relates to special ed was the first thing that I noticed. You know, the transportation reduction. And of course, staff will continue to kind of dig through the ramifications of other changes, whether it's financial or policy and what that, how that translates into budget. So just stay connected with our legislators and help them understand that, you know, the funding is well-used. It's going to our students and reductions have a negative impact. I have one question, and I was trying to look this up myself before the meeting. One thing that popped out when I looked at the spending per student within each school site. I noticed that Virtual Academy was much, much higher in spending per student. And if you don't have the answer, Tyler or Dr. Battle, I'm wondering if maybe it's related to title funds and grants?
I mean, that's certainly possible. Was it elementary or secondary?
It was elementary, and the difference was anywhere from 21,000 to 30, 21,000 in FY24, 33,006 in FY25, compared to the other elementaries where it was anywhere from 13, 15,000 to 17,000 per student. Maybe it's something to come back with an answer on.
I certainly could dig into it further to get, you know, a more precise answer. A lot of that has to do, I think, Virtual Academy Elementary is declining in enrollment, and we still have to have a certain number of staff to, you know, run the program.
And I didn't want to hop there. Because we like the concept of Virtual Academy and it still needs to be a fiscally sound venture.
Yeah, and one of the things that, you know, the Virtual Academy is a, it's a win for us when we don't have to pay the transportation and transportation costs are not allocated to those other buildings, too. So that's, you know, it doesn't, it's not apples to apples there.
I think you heard in the VA report, the additional staff I added this year, so I'm continuing that. Yeah, because we have a standard for the elementary experience.
I guess it's something we'll have to think about because that significant of a difference in spending per student, it just, it jumped out at me. Thank you, Tyler. Appreciate your time and the effort with this budget report. Next, we'll turn to Dr. Battle with our Superintendent Report.
Thank you, Chair Alt and members of the Board. Three items, topics for my report tonight. First, I want to thank the teachers, staff, and administrators who engaged in the READ Act statement training. It's an understatement to say it was intense. It was much more complex and intense than we had anticipated. So I really want to thank the staff for engaging and getting through to your certification. Secondly, I would like to comment on our wonderful class of 2025. Friday evening, we had 610 graduates participate in the ceremony, even though the graduation class is a little bit bigger. It was a joyous occasion for students, families, and staff members and community. I am so proud of your accomplishments. I want to thank my staff, Burnsville Police Department, unparalleled security, and all the first responders for your quick response to the horrible incidents that happened after our graduations. We are Burnsville, Eagan Savage, 191, and we are community strong. We will not let outsiders diminish the accomplishments of our wonderful students. This board meeting started off with the COSCRIN award winners. Those students, community members, all volunteers represent who we are. And so to the class of 2025, always and forever will be your very proud superintendent. Last topic, tonight will be my last Superintendent's Report as my tenure as Superintendent will end June 30th. My heart is filled with gratitude for the honor of serving as Superintendent for 191 for the last six years. After 40.5 years as an educator and educational leader, it is time for me to retire from working and embark on the next chapter of my life. I am truly blessed and have lived a blessed life from my childhood upbringing, surrounded by my loving family, especially my great-grandmother, Lily. My family loved and nurtured me and made sure I knew who I am and whose I am. They emphasize faith, family, and education. I'm blessed for the great friendships, the great teachers I had from kindergarten through graduate school and my wonderful colleagues. I am my ancestors' wildest dreams. In my first all-staff welcome to open the 2019-2020 school year, I shared pictures of my, and my memories of my beloved parents, Horace and Teresa Howell, and my Gigi, Lily. Lily was born in 1882 and died in 1994 and never finished elementary school. Her grandparents were enslaved in our beloved country, and she did not become a full citizen until the Voting Rights Act of 1965. My family and his family were sharecroppers. I call them farmers. And my father only finished the fourth grade because his parents needed him to farm. My mother finished high school. They probably never imagined that I would be a first-generation college student, earn a doctorate, and become the first black woman Superintendent of Burnsville, Eagan, Savage District 191. I said my heart is full of gratitude, and I want to thank some people. Thanks to the 191 Board of Education for giving me the opportunity to serve these three wonderful communities, all the students, families, and the best staff ever, and being great partners in leading this district. I want to recognize past and present Board members for your faith in me. Abigail Alt, Amory Anderson, Tony Connor, Leslie Chester, DeeDee Courier, Jen Holwigger, Scott Hume, Eric Miller, Rachel Mickelson, Safio Merzal, Sue Said, Darcy Schatz, Tyler Saxey, and Anna Werbe. To my past and present executive leadership team for your dedication and commitment to work to achieve our district mission, each student future-ready, community-strong. Brian Gersich, Lisa Ryder, Stephanie White, Chris Belmont, Isis Buchanan, Stacy Sovine, Amina Oftedal, Jason Sellers, Amy Pietrowski, and Aaron Tinklinberg. I'm grateful to elected officials for your partnership, especially Burnsville Mayor Elizabeth Kautz and former Savage Mayor Williams and current Mayor Christine Kelly. The Burnsville, Savage, and Eagan City Councils and my city counterparts, Burnsville City Manager Greg Lindberg, Eagan City Manager Diane Miller, and Savage City Administrator Brad Larson. Our wonderful police and fire departments, a shout-out to Police Chief Tanya Schwartz and Fire Chief BJ Youngman, and all the police and fire personnel who supported me and our district. To my Superintendent colleagues, your professionalism, competency, and friendship have made, have meant the world to me. My colleagues from Hampton Public Schools, where I started as a junior high teacher, St. Paul Public Schools, where I worked for 28 years, Osseo Area Schools, Minneapolis Public Schools, and the University of Minnesota. I am a better person because you have been in my life. I thank my friends and sorority sisters for your friendship and support. I'm grateful to the community partners, such as the Burnsville Chamber of Commerce, Savage Chamber of Commerce, the Lions, Burnsville Education Network, and my fellow Noon Rotary members. I could not have asked for better 191 Board members and colleagues. We have had to navigate the day-to-day management and governance of the district. We passed an operating levy with strong community support. We passed the technology levy. We enhanced pathways, broadening it to elementary and middle schools. We launched the Associate Arts Degree Program. We closed three schools, and we redrew attendance boundaries. And we not only survived, but thrived a pandemic. It is not lost on me that my great-grandmother and I survived the pandemic. She, the 1918 pandemic, and me, the coronavirus pandemic. To the families who trusted. To the families who trusted 191 to care for your beloved children and teenagers, I'm grateful that you chose our district. Lastly, I'm truly blessed and grateful for my fabulous husband, Robert, and my children, Khalil and Dominique. I cherish your love, support, patience, and understanding, as I have had a career that kept me away from you nights and weekends. I could not have done my best without your love and support. I love you madly. In conclusion, you may ask what's next. In a recent visit to Vista View Elementary second-grade teacher Jen Gandrew's class, she explained to her students that I was retiring. To help them understand what retirement meant, she shared, "Dr. Battle is going on a permanent summer vacation, and she will not be back in September. She is done." So that's what's next, a vacation. I have no plans to work again. Even though people want me to teach college courses, they want me to sub as a principal, tell about recruitment for superintendency positions, Robert and I will embark on our first cruise in August that was organized by my first, second, and third cousins in Philadelphia. And then I plan to continue my family history research and find out how my ancestors made it from Nigeria to Virginia. I have applied for my Library of Congress card, where I plan to spend some time researching in their genealogy section. I also have a girlfriend's trip planned with my three girlfriends I met in ninth grade, and now I'm the last to retire. So they said, "What took you so long?" So I wish you all farewell, but never goodbye. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Battle. Any comments or questions, board members? Thank you. We appreciate you. We wish you well. We know we'll see you for the rest of the month. And we'll continue to see you. So thank you, Dr. Battle.
Thank you.
Next, we'll turn to board member reports. Remember that committee and school reports are scheduled for the next regular board meeting. All right. Seeing none, now we will turn to the business portion of our meeting. Although board action is required, it is generally unnecessary to hold discussion on these items, turning to the consent agenda. In the event a board member wishes to discuss an item, that item will be moved for a separate consideration. Is there anything that board members would like to separate? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Director Anderson.
Second.
Seconded by Director Chester. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next, we will turn to new business. We're being asked to adopt a resolution to accept donations with Dr. Battle.
Yes. Thank you, Chair and members of the board. Before I present the formal resolution, I wanted to say thank you to the many community partners and organizations that support education in District 191. Included in this month's report are donations from local companies and individuals to support our Brain Power in a Backpack program, the Burnsville High School Choir Program, and our Student Support Services Program. You have a list of those partners who were instrumental. So it is my recommendation that the Board of Education adopt a resolution to approve and accept donations in accordance with our school board policy and Minnesota statutes, and to permit their use as designated by donors.
Did I read the correct word?
Okay.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Director Hume.
Second.
Seconded by Director Mickelson. Is there any discussion? All right. Tonight, we're being asked to adopt a resolution to approve and accept donations as presented, whereas they follow School Board Policy 706 and Minnesota Statute 123B and 465.03. The resolution will require a roll call vote, so in just a second, I will ask Sarah to call the roll, and when she calls your name, please respond by saying either an aye if you are in favor of the resolution, or nay if you are opposed. Sarah, will you please make the roll call?
Director Saxi?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Aye.
Director Chester?
Aye.
Director Chair Alt?
Aye.
Director Mickelson?
Aye.
Aye.
This resolution is declared duly passed and adopted. Next, we will turn to being asked to approve joint powers agreement with Minnesota Office of Higher Education with Dr. Belmont.
Thanks for having me back, Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Battle. The directed mission program is new to Burnsville High School and Burnsville Alternative High School and Virtual Academy High School. It's not new to the state. I believe it debuted three years ago. The program is free to promote college application attendance for enrolled high school seniors. Actually begins, I believe, with 11th graders and then leads them into 12th grade. The goal is to lead on the 50-plus colleges and universities who choose to participate and help get those students that direct access and confidence and opportunity to take that step and apply for school. You know, so, so the terms of the agreement are July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2030. The estimated annual payment is $2,000, not to exceed $10,000 for five years. Again, that's, that's at no cost to the school district, I'm sorry, at no cost to the students that are participating. We spent last year working with Principal Sandoval, Principal Ron, just looking at the feasibility and the impact of, of staff energy and capacity on this program, so they felt good enough to apply this spring. My understanding is it's close to 200, if not more than 200, high schools currently participating in Minnesota. So I'm just asking the board to approve the joint powers agreement with the Minnesota Office of Higher Education.
Thank you, Dr. Belmont. Do I have a motion? So moved. Moved by Director Chester, second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Anderson.
I just have one clarifying question, more so for the community. It's really any junior or senior at either the high school or Virtual Academy High School or alternative high school, regardless of whether they've taken any college in the school's classes or...
Correct. Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that question. That's correct.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. All those in favor of approving this recommendation, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Next, we are being asked to approve changes to the Burnsville High School athletic and activities fees for FY '26. Same with Dr. Belmont.
Thank you. The board may recall, on May 22nd, Director Kleiner, Director Kleiner and Associate Principal Heim were here presenting some of their work around fee restructuring and increase to athletics and activity, the fee schedule. In general, fees were raised by an average of 15%. The athletic activities participation fees have not increased in several, several years, while expenses continue to rise every year. The leadership and support staff does believe that they took that, through the reorganization, they will see increased efficiencies and better supports for things like equipment cost programs and transportations, transportation, as well as less confusion for registering families. The A.D. Kleiner and A.P. Heim also did share about discounted access for students and families who qualify with educational benefits.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Belmont.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Director Hume, second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Saxi. Any discussion or questions?
Director Battle?
Thank you. Can I highlight one of the other proposals? Athletics and activities family cat.
Thank you.
For those families who have several students in activities.
Thank you.
Well, one very active student.
Yes.
You took the words out of my mouth. Thank you, Dr. Battle.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. It's a new feature.
So not seeing any other questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the motion carries unanimously. Staying with Dr. Belmont, we are next being asked to approve the District 917 itinerant MOU agreement.
Yes. So the board heard a report tonight on ISD 917 itinerate memorandum of understanding agreement. So I'm formally requesting that the board approves the MOU with the intermediate school district 917.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Director Chester, second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Anderson. Questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Moving right along to policies. Staying with Dr. Belmont, we're being asked to approve on a first reading basis new policy 524, personal electronic communication devices and cell phone.
So somewhat of a novelty for the board, a new policy to present to you for first reading approval. The policy 524, personal electronic communication devices and cell phone, I believe we discussed that at multiple policy review committees, including most recently on May 20th, 2025. Board members may also recall that in last spring, 2024 legislative session, requiring school districts to formally adopt a policy around cell phones. We currently have that embedded in policy 634 and adjacent policy, our electronic technologies. Our review committee went into more detail and discussion and ended up creating this new policy that you see before you. If approved and gone through, then our review committee will work to make sure that there are proper, that we properly vet through policy 634. So we cleaned that up and have the, kind of have the clean new policy, as well as looking at a regulation that can support this current policy 524 with more, with more details and direction for school administrators and school support staff around navigating that legislation and cell phones and, cell phones and electronic devices in general.
Thank you, Dr. Belmont. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Director Hume, seconded by Director Anderson. Questions or comments? Director Hume, you look like you have something.
The wheels are turning.
Wheels are turning, okay.
From a couple weeks ago. I think one of the things that we talked about, you kind of touched on it, I think, just now, was with the regulations that would be coming to us at a future meeting. Was that also to further define on the response to violation sections, the level one, level two, level three? I think that was also part of the conversation?
Yeah, I think so.
Yes, okay.
Thank you for that question. I mean, I think what the, the board can anticipate in the, in the coming meetings is just roll clarity around how both proactive and reactive responses to the topics of cell phones or individual electronic devices in the classroom, parse it out by level, K5, middle school, and high school, too. So, yes.
This is definitely an improvement on what we had before.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I think my only comment, Dr. Belmont, would be, out of respect for families and staff and students, that we try to have the regulations coming to policy and then the full board before the start of, of the new school year, so that folks can know that they can go to the policy and easily find information about cell phones, and then also the supporting regulations, and we're all on the same page.
Sounds good. And thank you for that feedback. We can also make sure it's embedded in the student handbook when it comes out.
Good point. Yep, absolutely. Awesome. All those in favor of approving policy 524, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Belmont.
Thank you.
Next, we're being asked to approve, on a first reading basis, changes to policy 206, public participation in school board meetings, complaints about persons at school board meetings, and data privacy considerations. And I will be presenting, just pulling it up. Information, the policy was reviewed by the policy review committee on May 20th, 2025, and was approved to move forward with a formal recommendation to the board. Changes include adding the following reference information to the listening session registration card, city and state of residence, and the context around that really is, the goal is to ensure that listening session participant, participants have a relationship with the 191 community, while at the same time mitigating concerns speakers might have on sharing their full address. Additionally, knowing that sometimes our broader community shows up to share their perspectives, sometimes in large numbers, we would hope that adding the city and state of residence to the registration card would ease the involvement of staff in vetting our speakers and their relationship to the district. So with that, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Director Anderson, second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Director Mickelson. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the motion carries unanimously. Next, we're being asked to approve, on a first reading basis, changes to policy 902 regulation fee schedule with Jason Sellers, Director of Community Services. Welcome, Jason.
Thank you, Chair Alt, Superintendent Battle, and Directors of the Board. On the first reading basis, changes to policy 902 are, were recommended on May 20th at the PRC meeting. Those changes include the inclusion of nonprofit groups and nonresidents who live outside the district boundaries in the fee schedule for those groups, increased equitable access to community groups in terms of rates, and increased rental opportunities based upon the new fee structures. I recommend that changes to 902 are be passed by you.
Great. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Director Saxi, seconded by Director Hume. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, finally, final item on the new business section, we're being asked to approve the 2425 collective bargaining agreement with 191 Liaison Association and Independent School District 191 with Ariel Olsen, Olsen, excuse me, Human Resources Coordinator. Welcome, Ariel.
Good evening, Vice Chair Alt, Superintendent Battle, and members of the board. Before you tonight is the collective bargaining agreement between district, between the district and the 191 Liaison Association, representing the district's cultural liaisons for the 2425 school year. The parties began negotiating in October of 2024 and reached a tentative agreement on June 2nd, 2025, after seven meetings. This one-year agreement was negotiated with the intent of their future two-year agreements aligning with those of other groups in the district. I will highlight the terms... I will highlight the terms of this agreement for you. First one, medical insurance is a flat rate and not a percentage. The second, projected one-year cost of the package to the district will be $138,000, reflecting an MSBA of 7.32% increase. This amount includes scheduled improvements, career steps, educational training, lane changes, and insurance premium increases. Number three, the average salary and benefit increase over the 2223 year per FTE is approximately $8,108. It is my recommendation that the board approves the agreement before you.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Director Anderson, second.
Second.
Seconded by Director Hume. Questions or comments?
I just have one.
Yes, Director Hume.
So you said this, but just to say it again out loud, this is for the school year that just ended, basically. So this contract that we're approving tonight expires in 18 days.
That's correct.
So we'll be restarting, so that they're synced up with all the other bargaining units.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I had one. On page 24, I think it's like the last page of the agreement. Would you mind elaborating further on this MOU? What is it issues specifically? There's a line, "Meet and clarify the differences, nuances, and ethical conflicts between performing the role of a cultural liaison and the role of an interpreter translator." Let me see if I can find it on the.
Yes, page 24, number.
Page 24, and it is number two on that page.
I might need to get clearance and get back to you by Monday morning.
Director Buchanan, do you want to join us?
I have some, we can explain a little bit more. Director Isis Buchanan, Director of Educational Equity.
Thank you.
I'll add on a few after your comments if I need to.
So one of the things that, because I was reading over this myself recently, too, since I like oversee liaisons, but item two is really about the concept of being a liaison. It's about being there, you know, to honor and support the families and the system, that bridge from school to home. Whereas when you're there as an interpreter, you're really listening to a conversation and just translating. And so best practice is not to have someone who is a liaison also interpreting. And so the language there is just meant to bring, even though there are times where life happens and it's urgent and someone may feel both of those, but really being intentional about making sure that, you know, like best practice, we are making sure that our liaisons are there as the liaison, not as the interpreter.
And essentially just reflecting back.
Yes, because it's, it's an ethical issue in a way, because the way you're listening, it just takes a lot.
And allowing, allowing each adult in the system to own their conversations appropriately.
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you for that. I appreciate it. All right. All those in favor of approving this agreement, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the motion carries unanimously. We are, I'm going to declare us in recess. It is now. 8:03, let's say at 8:13, we'll be back at the dais for a work session to conduct a, to review a final list of board priorities with Dr. Battle. And we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.[723.51]